If you'd be willing to do the invocation for tonight's meeting.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you, dear Lord, for the opportunity to gather here, dear Lord, to discuss the business of the city. But more importantly, Lord, we thank you, dear Lord, for the beautiful day we've had and for the opportunities we've had, dear Lord, to share in your blessings that you've given to us each day. So, Father, I just wanted to ask, dear Lord, just continue to bless us throughout this meeting, continue to bless our efforts as we move forward within our lives, not only to enhance ourselves, but also to enhance those within our community and around the world. So, Father, we just continue to pray also, Lord, for our elections coming up, and just pray, Father, that you would just bless us as we continue to do your will. And, Lord, we just always give that name to praise, give that name to glory and honor, for you deserve it, you are the one. For it's all through Jesus Christ, so I want to pray all these things. Amen.
Amen, Father.
Amen.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is our October 2016 regular council meeting. If you wouldn't mind, let's please stand and pledge the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Hoffman, can you please take roll call?
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp.
Here.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Counsel, you've received a copy of the minutes for the September 6, 2016, regular council meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept as adopted or as written. I see a motion by Mr. Cahill, second by Mrs. Sudcamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, you've received a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting, October 4, 2016. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adopt. Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Skidmore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda. Under Special Presentations, we've got a Business Spotlight. Mr. Chad Bills with Focus Insurance is here to speak with us. He has moved back here, has moved his business back here into the city, and he's in the Phil Dree's building over by the Super Bowl. Let you tell us a little bit about it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah, as Tyson said, I have moved back home. It's good to be back in Erlanger again, from downtown Cincinnati. And I was joking around that I've eaten way too much Dixie chili since I've been back, so I gotta figure out a way to keep steering clear of that. So, yeah, I opened up an insurance and risk management agency. I've got over 20 years' experience in the business, both doing national and multinational commercial accounts, and just got tired of the corporate grind, so decided to venture out on my own. And I have two employees right now, and we're writing personal insurance, home and auto and life insurance, and all sizes of commercial insurance. So, I'm licensed in 18 states, so we can do business pretty much anywhere if somebody has it. I'm also a licensed consultant, so we can, you know, write reviews of current programs and do fee-based consulting work, too, if that need ever arises, which is kind of rare, having a consultant's license. There's not many of us in the state that have that. So, but when I was looking for office space, this space popped up, and it was perfect. And as Tyson said, I know a lot of faces around here. It's good to be coming back to Erlanger every day, and I'm super pleased to be here. So, and I appreciate the invitation to come out and speak to you all and tell you about my business. So, shorter is always better, generally, with insurance presentations. So, what I thought I would do is, is I'll leave some business cards on the table going out, and if anybody has a need, a small business person would really appreciate your business very much. So, thank you so much for the time.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we've got service pins. We've got our first recipient under police. Lieutenant, are you gonna do the introduction?
Mayor and Counsel, good evening. Chief Wilson and Lieutenant Colonel Brenda are out of town this week in training, which worked out pretty good, actually, for me, because both these gentlemen that we're recognizing tonight work for me in the detective's office. The years for Tom Loos shows five years, and Jeff Moser for 15. It's kind of misleading, because between the two of them, there's 50 years of total experience. Tom started out at Fort Mitchell, and some of you old ones may know that with his dad was here at Erlanger, it was kind of his dream to end up back here at Erlanger someday. So, after a lucrative career at Fort Mitchell, he retired and came to us in 2011, I believe it was. Ten, late 10, early 11. And then Jeff Moser, I actually hired at Crescent Springs when we were still Crescent Springs, so he came out as part of the merger. Like I said, between the two of them, there's 50 years of total experience, even though the service pins always say five and 15 right now. I kind of refer to them as my bookends in the detective's office, because they kind of keep things together and they keep it all nice and even. Councilwoman Sudcamp will mention a couple of cases here during the public service, or the police department report, that these two are instrumental in. So, first, Jeff, 15 years. And Tom for five. I never thought I'd see them camera shy. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for everything.
All right, we've got a couple of proclamations here this evening. The first one we have is regarding breast cancer awareness. Proclamation by the mayor of the city of Erlanger, Kentucky, to all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas October 6, 2016, marks 32 years that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women, men, and their families about early breast cancer detection. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection of breast cancer by collaborating with several national public organizations, professional associations, and government agencies who work together to ensure that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month message is heard by thousands of people. And whereas, the American Cancer Society estimates, in the United States, nearly 246,000 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women this year. And whereas, the American Cancer Society estimate, estimate, in the United States, more than 2,600 new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in men this year. And whereas, through research and advocacy, significant advancements have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including significant decreases in mortality rates. And whereas, the 2.8 million breast cancer survivors living in the United States today are a testament to courage, as well as the importance of promoting self-awareness about breast cancer, providing information, funding research, following recommended screening guidelines, and offering treatment to those who are affected. Now, therefore, I Tyson Hermes, Mayor of the city of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim October 2016 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Erlanger, and do commend this observance to all our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the city of Erlanger, on this fourth day of October 2016. We've got Mr. Chris Cudouli with the I Have Wings Breast Cancer Awareness, I'm sorry, I Have Wings Foundation, to speak with us this evening and to accept the proclamation.
Yeah, I'll say a few words. Unfortunately, Janet Chambers, the founder, had other obligations tonight, so she was not going to be able to make it. So, I will give, I'll do my best to fill her spot. My name's Chris Cudouli, I'm actually the president of I Have Wings Breast Cancer Foundation. I'd like to thank the mayor and their honorable city council to have us here tonight to talk and kind of spread the word about I Have Wings. I Have Wings was founded in Erlanger, Kentucky, back in 2002 by Janet Chambers, which is actually still in Erlanger today. We, our purpose is, the wings of our, and the name stands, without inspiration, no one goes solo. And that is our hope for the foundation, is, you know, cancer is a terrible disease, and a lot of people who get diagnosed with breast cancer, they get this, they get the news, and they don't know how to handle it. They don't know how to deal with that. And Janet is actually a cancer survivor, and so when she decided to start I Have Wings, one of the most important missions of the organization was to support those that are going through their breast cancer battle and their journey. She will provide emotional support, sometimes she'll be on the phone hours with people that are going through their journey, just talking to them, telling them it's going to be okay, just listening, just allowing them to talk about what they're going through. And I'll tell you, the letters that we get in the mail, the cards, the thank you cards are incredible, because just by being there and just listening to those people, she provides a service that people cannot even imagine. It is incredible. Another part of our mission is education. So, Janet and the organization will go to various health fairs, and we provide informational material, and she will actually speak at local high schools about breast cancer, talk about early detection, all these things that are important, because it is about early detection and to be able to get through that battle. One of the other major things, and one of the thing that we use our financial resources for the most, is financial support. A lot of times, when people are going through their breast cancer journey, they can't work. So, they either go from a two-income home to a one-income home, or sometimes a one-income home and going to having no income, because they're not able to work. So, we kind of step in where other organizations can't, and we'll help, we'll buy wigs, we will pay for gas money so they can get to and from their chemo treatments, pay for taxis, pay for bus fares so they can get to and from their chemo treatments. We'll buy food for them. Sometimes they don't have enough money to, you know, buy food for their family. It's, our organization is amazing, it really is. The stuff that we do, and the majority of it is here locally in the tri-state area. One of the other things that we do, and it started out small, I think probably about 10 years ago, we helped maybe four or five families that wouldn't have had Christmas otherwise, we bought Christmas presents for the kids. I think last year, we had about 25, 30 families that we were able to provide Christmas for that, you know, these kids wouldn't have Christmas presents otherwise. So, we have people in the organization that volunteer, they pick a family, we go and buy the gifts, and we deliver them, we sit and talk, you know, we just, it's amazing. Sometimes, most of the time, we end up buying stuff for the mother and the father as well, because it's not just about the kids, it's about, you know, making the parents feel great as well. Trying to make sure. One of the final things that we actually do every year, almost every year, is we provide a grant to Wood Hudson Cancer Research Center. It's located in Newport, Kentucky, and they are one of the nation's leading cancer research organizations in the, in the U.S., and one of the few laboratories that are non-government ran, and it's a great organization, and if you actually have time to get down there and tour their laboratory, it's amazing, some of the stuff they can do. We have two big fundraisers a year. The first one is the Spring Bling. It's actually an amazing event. We usually have about 400 people that come. There's entertainment, it's a luncheon, it's a lot, a lot of fun. That Spring Bling for 2017 is April 1, and it's actually at Receptions in Erlanger, and you can go to I Have Wings website and register and get your tickets now for that. Our second big fundraiser is the Div It Up for Breast Cancer Golf Outing, and that is always the first Friday in October, which is, believe it or not, this Friday. So, we are actually sold out on foursomes and everything else, but, you know, donations, everything would be wonderful. And then next year, it is, actually, it's probably one of the most fun golf outings that I've been to. It's always a great, great time. So, thank you again. If you want to visit our website, it's ihavewings.org, and thanks again for allowing us to come speak today.
Thank you, Chris.
If I may, Mayor.
Yes.
I used to sit on Janet's board, and I want you to know, I have never seen an organization operate like this one does. They literally adopt the family of that breast cancer patient, and whatever they need, whether it's money to keep the heat on, you know, and all the other things that you forgot to mention, you're also her son-in-law. But I cannot tell you how proud I am. Janet and I have been friends, we worked together at the airport many, many years ago. I went through her journey with her, and she is such an inspiration, and I, I just, go to the website, you'll just be blown away, it's ihavewings.com.
Thank you, Patty. All right, we do have another proclamation this evening, because October is also Fire Prevention Month. So, to whom, to all these, excuse me, to all to whom these presents shall come. Whereas, Erlanger is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported fire, home fires in half. Residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas, cooking is the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries, while heating equipment and smoking are the leading causes of home fire deaths. And whereas, Erlanger's employees and volunteers are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection and education. And whereas, Erlanger's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their home. Those who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, the 2016 Fire Prevention Month theme, "Don't Wait, Check the Date, Replace Smoke Alarms Every 10 Years," effectively serves to remind us all of the simple actions we can take to stay safer from fire during Fire Prevention Month and year-round. Now, therefore, I Tyson Hermes, Mayor of the city of Erlanger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim October 2016 to be Fire Prevention Month in Erlanger, and do commend this observance to all our citizens, given under my hand and the seal of the city, on this fourth day of October 2016. Chief Whitaker, would you accept this proclamation?
We did a press release Monday, and I'd be remiss if I didn't send out thanks to Councilman Dunoff and the Erlanger Lions for their donation to our local 206. With those funds, we were able to purchase, it's going to be anywhere between 50 and 60 smoke and CO detectors. We have some in stock, and we're kind of running a program that will come out and do that for free, as long as we have them. So, the press release went out Monday, and we look to doing that in October, but we want to thank you and your organization again for helping us out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, the next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. So, I know I haven't said it before, but I'd like to take a moment just by saying that it has been my honor to have served the city as mayor. I've enjoyed every moment of the past two years, and as I approach the halfway point of my term, I just wanted to say that, that it's been a distinct honor. It's been extremely rewarding and to be able to see some of the positive changes in the city. And also, I outlined some of these things in the mayor's report, are the whistle stop. I hope that I've shown that I'm committed to the job, and that I plan to continue my efforts under the guidance of my faith and fiscal responsibility. So, there's some great things, some of the great things that continue to happen in Erlanger. The library is expanding. I don't know how many of you are familiar with what's going on up there, but they are moving their administrative offices to Erlanger, the Kenton, the Kenton County Library is. So, Angela Pear, the branch manager, said that they'll be adding a 500-seat auditorium, along with multiple small meeting rooms. She said that they will also house the Northern Kentucky's first Maker Space for 3D printing. They'll also be expanding the parking lot. This, the entire expansion will bring about 30 more jobs to Erlanger. We're also continuing to find, work on finding more cost-effective solutions to improve the look of the railroad overpass. We're continuing on the path of covering the steel with a banner, barring that the railroad will allow us to hang something on their bridge. Rick Bogard and Mr. Vioxx are assembling proposals and options for work on the concrete abutments, the landscaping, and the sidewalk improvements that are also associated with the project. The cinema site development is continuing with Al Nire. Dan Rue, their vice president, said the people have been coming out of the woodwork, those were his words, coming out of the woodwork, with interest in locating their company in the proposed business park. I've gotten some word, some of the word very recently, of some exciting developments that I hope I can share with you in the, in the next six months, of people who are considering going in there. Mark Fields and Dave Hahn have informed me also that within the, within a day of each other, two potential buyers are interested in the Pleasant Isle site. And again, hopefully, we can talk more about that in the next few months as well. And finally, I wanted to give a shout-out to Sherri Hoffman, with the recent success of the sale of the Mums to support the Troop Bravo battery. Sherri and her staff sold over 200 of these Mums, raising $633 for the troop. So, thank you so much for your work on that. And that's all I have for this evening. So, with that, we'll move on with the reports of the committees. We'll, the first one on the list here is Public Safety under Police. Mrs. Sudcamp, Mrs. Kyle?
Yes, sir. As Mike just introduced Jeff Moser and Tom Loos, they, they just, they just think they're doing their jobs, and they are, and I get that, but I, I think that we need to blow their horns when they just do exemplary work. And they've proven that in the past month, twice. I'm sure you all saw on TV the, what they were calling the T-shirt Bandit, and who hit Covington, Fort Wright, Fort Mitchell, Crescent Springs, Erlanger, and Florence. Well, guess who caught him? The bookends. And, and, well, of course, not without, you know, the team effort of the whole department and other departments. It takes, it takes an army. And then they also had an arrest and a conviction of Darren Walker for numerous counts of sexual assault, and Mr. Walker was sentenced to life in prison. So, he will never, ever hurt another child. So, God bless you, boys, for what you do, and we're very, very proud of you.
Thank you.
Officer Janson's in the office, or in the audience, if he'd like to say anything else?
Anything to add, Lieutenant?
No comments.
Okay, all right. Do we want to talk about this, the report from 9/2016, the committee meeting?
I'm just gonna, we, we never came to any kind of a conclusion, and since the chief is out of town, I will just say progress.
Yeah, from what I understand, Joe Kristofield has begun the survey of the area. Mark, did you want to say any more about it?
Yeah, so this has been given to Joe, he's going to survey the area, and it's going to be from like Fieldcrest all the way over to perimeter, all the way down perimeter, and everything that's in between there and Stevenson Road, so that triangle there, to survey all the residents, to see what their opinions are about closing that, that intersection at perimeter and Stevenson, to see what that is. I've got a sample of the survey, it's just a single question that's going to be given to everybody. I don't know that we need to pull it up. You don't have to pull it up, Sherri, I would think. It's okay. It's a single question whether or not you would be supportive of doing that, and if they, if it's a safety issue, do you support the closure of that road? Along with the map of the area that we're, that we're doing, so. Timeframe to get that completed, I didn't give him a timeframe to get it completed. My guess is, you know, by the next council meeting, we should have some results of that. I don't know if he contacted you, sir, or not, but he was going to contact you. I gave him your contact information. He, he's familiar with you, he said he's had some correspondence with you before on events and things, because he's our, he was doing some of that, that he corresponded with you with email, so I'm not so sure about this issue, but, so he was familiar when I gave him your stuff, so. He should be in contact. Okay, so we'll get that done.
Thank you, Mark.
I do know, and the police are here, and I know Lieutenant Janson probably has a report of this, but if you've been following the police reports, there's been a lot of traffic over there. I see a lot of enforcement in that area, a lot of traffic stops, citations being written along that whole Howlum Teakwood perimeter, perimeter part there. So, I know the police are doing their jobs and are trying to be over there as much as possible, so I do know that, that's occurring.
Thank you. All right, next up, we've got, again, under Public Safety, the Fire EMS, Mrs. Skidmore, Mr. Meyer?
Well, Tyson, I think you pretty well summed it all up when you did your Fire Prevention Month and talked about everything, the smoke detectors and carbon monoxide and everything, so I think the only thing to do now is defer to Chief Todd Whitaker and ask if he has anything to add.
Okay. Chief? Wow.
Hey, ho.
All right.
Woo.
Go on and leave, chief.
Paul would have known it was going to be this easy.
It's our vacation.
We're going to make every month Fire Prevention Month. All right, the next item on the agenda is under Public Works. Mr. Cahill, Mr. Skidmore?
Yes, I would like to mention that Lead Collection is going to start the 24th of October, and it'll be going through December, first week in December. And I would like to thank the Public Works team for the great job they've done at Heritage Day, and all the work that they've done setting that up and taking everything down. It looked great.
Yeah.
Mr. Bogard, can you add anything?
Yeah, so we have milling going on on Graves and Cowie right now, Riggs Avenue. We're showing a lot of progress with that, and we're going to talk about the assessment that's going on with the sidewalks and the grants, we're going to defer that to Mr. Fields' report. Mr. Bogard?
Okay. All right, then, next item is under Administration, Mr. Howard, Mrs. Cahill?
Now, besides thanking Sherri and everybody for the Mum fundraiser, the administration would also like to thank the Lions Club in the Lakemont subdivision, because they donated many items towards the Afghanistan troop, the troop going over to Afghanistan, so she just wanted to include them in that. And then a reminder that the tax bills were out, we have ours. Everybody should have theirs, along with Kenton County's, I'm sure, too. And then that the deadline for the 2% discount is October the 31st, and then reminder that trick-or-treating is October the 31st in Erlanger from 6 to 8. And then Bill is going to...
Yes, Mayor, this one reports us on some past events we've had here in the city. On September the 1st, we had the Shakespeare in the Park, at Flagship Park, and the Cincinnati Shakespeare Company came out and performed "A Midsummer Night's Dream," and we had a great turnout, there were 275 people that showed up for that, so it was a great blowout for the city, it was a wonderful time. And the month of September, on Wednesdays, they had the free yoga class at Flagship Park, which I did not participate in, and they had a total of 21 people that participated in that, so, and, so there's still, still room to grow and stretch, so.
Thank you.
And then on September 18th, it was Heritage Day at Depot Park, and I think from our perspective, we like to do kudos from Public Works for the great, great job they did, getting everything cleaned up, and it was a beautiful day, and hundreds of people showed up for that, so we're pleased about that. Some of our, two of our upcoming events that's coming up is on Saturday, on... Some of our, two of our upcoming events that's coming up is on Saturday, on October the 15th, a week from Saturday, is our Halloween Carnival at 5:30 PM. I believe that's going to be at the Depot. And following, following the Halloween Carnival at 7:15, they're going to show the movie Corpse Bride, and during the movie, they'll be providing free popcorn and lemonade. And then on Sunday, October the 30th, it's going to be Halloween at the library, and it says, "Enjoy Halloween stories and go trick-or-treating at the library. Costumes encouraged, but not mandatory. Co-sponsored by the City of Earlanger. The city will provide the trick-or-treat bags with a few treats as well." So that's what's going on there, but I am really, really excited about a new program we've got going on here in the city, which is finally coming to perspective now. In January, at this, at our city council retreat, one of the big items we brought up was volunteer programs. Well, since Joe Kristofeld's come on board, I've gotten hold of him, and we've, and me and, me, Jim, and Kim Walking have been meeting together on this one. And on Monday, which is next week, we're going to kick off our community volunteer program here in the city building at 7:00 PM, and we're going to have, we're going to have pizza and soft drinks for that, and we've got 16 volunteers that have actually signed up to, to participate in that. And two of those, two of those volunteers that are participating, are going to participate in that is the Christ Hospital Volunteer Director and the St. E. Hall, Director at St. E's. So we were real, I mean, that was, we didn't believe that when we, when we got that message from them, so. And so we want to make sure that everybody knows about that. So if you want to be part of the volunteer program, see what's going to happen, how we kick it off, that's next Monday at 7:00 PM here in the city council chambers. I encourage everybody, I encourage the 23 people who are running for city council this year, please be there, because you all, you all wanted the program to go. So it's time for you to see how we, what we've come up with, so I want to bring that up, and like I said, we are just really excited about what's going to happen from there.
Great.
With that, I turn it over to Sherri Hoffman, if she's got anything to report.
Nothing to add?
Good job, Bill, good job.
Yeah, great job, Bill.
Wish you all the best.
That's Monday, October 10th at 7:00 PM here. Okay, wonderful, thanks for putting that together. Yes, Mr. Dunhoff?
Okay, it's nice that you complimented Lions Club on what they did. I'm going to renege on that, because that was the youth football program. That was the parents and kids of every football team up there, they're the ones that collected all those goods, and they collected, I mean...
Oh, that's sweet.
Boxes. I mean, I'm talking about, I, I went up there and helped them pack these boxes up, and I said, "No, we got to put this stuff in smaller boxes, because it was just getting too heavy," but it was all the kids and their parents got together, but the team that brought the most in got the pick, which coaches got the pie in the face. They decided, well, it was so good, the kids did such a good job, all the kids, and sure there was, every coach up there got a pie in the face that night.
That's great.
If it ever gets out in the paper, I think it was the kids from the youth football program and cheerleading program, and their parents that did all that, so.
That's wonderful.
There was all the parents that did all that.
What a great thing to teach the children.
It was awesome, I mean...
That is great.
Great teacher.
That is great.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is economic and, excuse me, economic development and finance, Mr. Blankenship and Mrs. Pitts?
Okay, you all were sent a copy of the preliminary June 30th, 2016 financial statements. These statements have not been yet audited, but we do not expect any significant changes during the audit process. And the auditors are scheduled to begin their field work on October 17th. In addition, you may be receiving a related party questionnaire from the auditors in the coming weeks. When you receive this questionnaire, please complete it and return it directly to the auditors as quickly as possible. You're next.
Okay. Also, we want to request a, I didn't know you were done, you paused.
I'm done.
October 18th, we can have a committee meeting to discuss a potential budget amendment.
Okay.
Steve's in the house?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
We're organized, man.
Used to you do it.
All right, next item then is under codes, building and zoning, Mr. Dunhoff, Mr. Burke?
Yes, I got a couple items. At the September 20th committee meeting, we discussed a request from the property owner of 3303, 3307 Dixie Highway to apply for a text amendment to neighborhood commercial NC zone to allow rental of U-Haul trucks. Based upon discussions in the committee meeting, the committee's recommendation is to not apply for a text amendment to allow rental of U-Haul trucks within the NC zone, so that won't be happening. Also, at the 9/20 meeting, we reviewed the bids for the demolition of the property at 710 Earlanger Road. The bids were received, there were six bids, and we accepted one bid, which will be under the bid comments tonight, we'll make that recommendation. Les Nalise, David Hahn, received a request for the zoning amendment of the property at 3313 Madison Pike, previously occupied by the Fund Center of Pleasure Isle. The committee requested a committee meeting on 10/18 to discuss the issue and hear from the respective user about the proposed plans for the property.
Great, wonderful.
And that's all I have, but Dave Hahn's in the house.
All right, thank you. All right, then, we've got progress in revitalization, Mrs. Pitts, Mr. Cahill?
No reports, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, you've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Mr. Meyer, second by Mrs. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, under the reports of representatives, do we have any, any reports this evening? Kent County Alliance? All right.
I got it all written down, so it won't take me very long.
All right.
This was the annual meeting of the Kent County Alliance, and it's usually held in October, because September is so busy, and it's based on the school year. So they have a meeting in October to summarize what has been accomplished. Our guest speaker was Stacy Tapke, Kent County Attorney. Miss Tapke summarized the issues that Kent County Alliance worked with all year, Casey's Law, heroin crisis, law enforcement, first responders know what to look for when they get on the scene, whether there's a drug issue or not. Terry Carl, Kent County jailer, drew national attention for his alcohol drug abuse program that's provided by the Kent County Jail. The support of the community we received from Joseph Beth Bookstore. They've displayed some of the banners that Notre Dame High School had made, again, on drug, drug abuse and other alliance issues. The Children's Home of Northern Kentucky was recognized. We had 55 participants in the, in the sticker shop program, so that means 55 shop owners, store owners allowed Kent County Alliance to come in and sticker the liquor at prom time, so that, to bring awareness to drinking and driving and that type of thing. Paul Flogger is our statistics keeper. He gives us the numbers, and he's talked about the use of these numbers for cigarette use, alcohol abuse, marijuana, and some of the statistics, and he had this, you know how statisticians are, they're very wordy and they're very, you know, but the bottom line was, in 2004, cigarette use in the 10th grade was at 25.2%, and 10 years later, in 2014, it was at 13.8%. Alcohol dropped from 35% to 22%, and marijuana use dropped from 23.6% to 13.6%. But that doesn't mean, and I think part of that, and I'm not taking away anything from the report, but I think some of that is, instead of those three things, people have moved on to other things that they're abusing. So I mean, the numbers are correct, but it's just that there's other things that people are using. The Tank Bus ads, they used, Tank allowed us to use 10 buses for six months with a one-line phrase. One phrase was "Encourage trust, encourage strength, encourage knowledge." Kent County Alliance paid four, six months for those ads, but Tank has left them on their buses until someone wants to run a different ad, or until they run out of buses.
Oh, that's nice.
So it's just kind of like, you'll see some of, and when it started out, Kent County wanted to keep them, the Kent County Alliance wanted to keep them in Kent County, and Tank Bus was like, well, we, you know, we can't do that. Sometimes we need the bus in Kent County, and sometimes we need it for another route. But that worked out really well, too, because some of the other people would see these, these buses in different parts of the, different parts of another county, and they would call Kent County Alliance and say, "Hey, what is this? What's going on?" So it was, it was a good thing. And then the Children's Home of Northern Kentucky started a program. It's called rhythmic drumming, and they actually had us do that one. It's, it's kind of interesting, but you feel kind of silly doing it, but it works. It's, it balances out your left brain and your right brain, and there was a grant awarded for this program to Earlanger Elsmere Schools, so that they could use it for some of their troubled children. The grant was awarded for this program for last year. Metamorphosis Program was with the Butterflies, seven schools involving 113 students. Earlanger Public Works provided the signage at the, at the schools to designate what the area was for the Butterflies, and they did it from the, all from the sign shop, and they installed them at the schools. The person who was recognized as the 2016 Kent County Alliance champion was Dr. Kathy Burkhardt, and she summed up the meeting when she got to, to accept her award, it was a verbal award, there was no monetary or anything. I'm sure she wouldn't have taken it anyway, because she is so involved in kids and everything. But her, she summed it up, alone, we can do so little, and together, we can do so much.
That's great.
All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Howard?
I was wanting to report on Kentucky League of Cities, that this, their convention started today, and they'll be going till Friday on that, so. And I also want to let people know that tomorrow at the, tomorrow at the awards lunch, and Mrs. Andrews will be receiving an award for the, for her participation.
Great.
So.
All right, great, thank you. Any other reports? All right, we'll move on then to the reports of city operations. I see Mr. Vioxx is not here, so we'll move on to the city attorney, Mr. Gatlin?
I have nothing to add, Your Honor.
All right, then, city council attorney, Mr. Wickman?
Yes, sir, we have on the agenda this evening the first readings of the two ordinances to bring our codes enforcement program into compliance with the legislation that was passed by the General Assembly this year. I don't know if there's any need for any additional discussion, but if there is, now's the time to do that. Additionally, Kevin, I'm sorry, but I have to ask for an executive session to discuss some litigation and sales from real estate. It won't take long.
I'll be there.
Okay. So the, you've mentioned, Mr. Wickman, the, that we should talk about something now regarding the, or you said if we had questions on the ordinances, to discuss it now?
Yes. And it's available for discussion if anybody wants it. I'm not, I don't know that there's any questions about them.
You know, I had some questions that I think we, between talking with Mr. Gatlin and Mr. Fields, I think, I think we got resolved, I don't know if they got changed in here or not. Were there any changes? What's that? Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay. So under the, the ordinance that is referring to prohibiting certain conditions and uses of real estate and structures in the city, 2.1.1. My, the, the concern that I had was, where it's, we're looking for a definition of public nuisance, it refers to the Property Management Code, PM 302.1. If you Google that, it comes up with a lot of different codes. You get anything from definitions of sanitation to descriptions of how properties are inspected, to other things like that. And so, Mr. Field, actually, I don't know who had the idea, but they, they had the idea to go ahead and post that on our website, a link to that property maintenance code, so it's an, so someone who's looking at this can find that easily. I thought that was a great response, a great, great solution to that issue. The other one was the NFPA 1. This is under 2.1.4. We refer to, we've got, you know, one item on here that refers to an entire other code. So, you know, the 2015 NFPA Uniform Fire Code is over 700 pages long, and if you try to find any of the text from that, if you Google that, it'll show you how to buy the $100 book. You know, so instead of having to go to the library or purchase the book, again, again, I don't know who came up with the idea, but they thought, why don't we go ahead and let people know that they can come and see, they can come and look at the book either here at our, at the, at the building here, or at the fire department, and put a phone number on here where they can contact the fire marshal to answer any questions about that? I thought that was a great solution. So I think with those, with those changes, or those, those notes, then I thought, I thought everything looked pretty, pretty good on there.
Mayor? Yes, sir. I, I do have a concern about with the fire marshal, with our central fire station not being handicap accessible, putting that as an, as an access point for NFPA.
So maybe have the book available here, but the phone call there?
There's only one book, okay? And our, our discussion with the fire chief and the fire marshal yesterday were that, in fact, we were going to have them contact the fire marshal's office, and then they would make that available to them, however, that would work, so.
Great point.
Well, we only have one, so.
Aren't we saying here that it's with the permit records attached to the ordinance? So wouldn't that be with the, with the rest of the code of ordinances?
It will not be in the code of ordinances.
It's saying it's attached, though.
Well, it says accompanies.
In the sense that it is in the clerk's office, that is correct.
Are we saying we should keep it in the clerk's office, or just make sure that it can get there?
I can't hear you, sir.
Are we saying that it should be kept in the clerk's office, then? Versus in the firehouse?
Statutes, yes, the statutes require codes that are adopted by reference to be maintained in the clerk's office. Now, is the clerk's office just that office over there, or does it include the whole complex? I think it's subject to some definition.
And if you'd like us to make copies of that, we'll make copies of it and put it wherever we need, but it, like the mayor said, it's two binders about this, this thick, and, and I'll, I'll tell you, I've talked to everybody in over the 30 years that, that I know that I've been here, and Dave Hahn's been here 34 doing this, we have not had one request for that, and it's never been an issue, so it is available, however many copies. I think, chief, and I can't remember, was it $200 it cost us to buy that book?
More than that, actually.
Yeah.
It's, it's quite expensive, and for a citizen, we have to join, and pay money to actually join the association. We can do that, we prefer to leave the book in the fire marshal's office. But will we answer any questions they have in conference?
Okay. If we need to make another copy of it, I'm sure we can copy it and put it somewhere, or...
Save the trees.
Save.
Save the trees.
Mr. Wickman, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to the city administrator, Mr. Fields?
Yes, sir, I have a couple things. The mayor reported in his report about the library expansion and new building. As a matter of fact, there's a public hearing Thursday night to planning commission to approve that, or they're, a public hearing they're going to have on it. So we would like to go and attend that hearing and speak in favor of that project. That would be the staff's recommendation for us to do that. We'd like to have council's feelings on that, or whether we want to support that project.
Absolutely, yes.
We kind of thought that's what it's going to be.
Opportunity of a lifetime, sure.
So we'll attend that meeting and speak in favor of that project. The meeting is Thursday. What time does it start, Dave? I know it's on here.
Yeah, I don't remember. I don't have my, my copy.
Is it 6? It starts at 6, doesn't it, I believe? 6:15, 6:15, at the, at the PDS office down on Royal Drive.
Thank you.
All right. Also, you know, and Mr. Blankenship talked about having the committee meeting for the budget amendment. On that, you know, we talked about capital projects at the last committee meeting, so that's part of the discussion that we want to have, is on the capital projects. I'd also like to have a discussion that night, reference the personnel play, pay plan. You've heard from both chiefs, and it's been discussed in the last couple meetings about pay and, and how there are some, some areas that need addressed. I think we'll be prepared at that point in time to make a presentation that would also include a, probably a budget amendment, not additional any dollars, but maybe moving some dollars around. We have some, some news that we believe will, will be able to change some of our expenses on one side to free up some money to maybe do some things. We're working on that plan, the mayor and I have met several times last night again, so we have some ideas that we'd like to present to council to, to look at, to see if, in fact, we need to take some kind of action to, to get those... if, in fact, we need to take some kind of action to, to get those issues addressed. So, we'd like to add that to that committee meeting. Also, the last meeting, we, we approved at the new enclave, I can't remember the complete name of it, but the streetlights for the new Drees development over on Turkey Foot Road. Upon looking at our streetlight ordinance, we need to update that. So, it is, it is quite old and talks about types of lighting that probably doesn't exist any longer. So, we need to update that with new style, the new types of lighting that's being used, especially the new technology that's come out to do some requirements. So, we'd also like to discuss that, that night and present some changes to, to that, to you all. On the sidewalks, we also talked about, um, the assessment. It's not going to begin until sometime in November. So, we, on the sidewalks, have been a discussion whether we want to maintain the ordinance the way it is currently or whether we want to do some changes to it. And we talk about liability and we talk about, you know, who's, who's liable to pay for repairs and things like that. So, we're looking at all those things, but we're waiting to get the assessment to do that. That assessment will not probably come in until probably after the first of the year is my guess. I forgot how many miles of sidewalk they're doing. Mr. Bogart, do you remember? 60-some, whatever it was. It was a lot of, of miles of sidewalks. I'm sure the company will take a little bit to do that, to get that back to us. And then, uh, we'll need to come up with a plan. So, that discussion probably can be pushed off until that point in time, till we get that back, look at it, review it, get that data and, and make some kind of informed decision about where we need to go. But along those same lines, the grants have been submitted for the Narrows Road, uh, grant, or sidewalk project and the Division Street project. So, both of those have been submitted. I don't know exactly when we'll hear back from that, but I will say this, on the other Dahlwick grant, the OKI will have their board meeting on the 13th. And I believe that'll be on the agenda somewhere. So, we'll find out on October 13th whether that's been approved or not. If, in fact, it has been approved, then that's going to be another part of our budget discussion as far as our part of paying for that along with Boone County. So, that 18th will be a whole lot of probably financed discussion. So, hopefully those things will all come to fruition, I'm hoping. And that's all I have, sir.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, you've heard the reports of our representatives and city operations. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Sudcamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, um, any correspondence this evening, Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes, sir. Mayor, council, and staff received a thank you card from Rick Bogart and family thanking everyone for their support during the passing of his father. The city received a thank you card from the Hines family, thanking everyone for their kindness and sympathy after the passing of John Hines' mother. And mayor and city received a thank you card from Nick and Brittany Smith, Smile for Brooklyn's Parents. They expressed their appreciation for the proclamation on behalf of all children fighting cancer.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is our citizen and public comments. Anybody signed up to speak? Okay. All right, we've got Mr. John McHugh.
Hello, mayor and council. My name's John McHugh. I wanted to bring to your attention that the streets of, or in fact, perimeter drive has not been maintained properly and is not up to code, uh, mainly due to the curb, due to the curbs causing flooding. On December 23rd, for the first time in my 17 years of living at 620 perimeter, and most likely the first time ever since the house was built in 1970, my house flooded doing well over $15,000 in damage, uh, which was not covered by my insurance or the city of Erlanger. Your own insurance adjuster looked at the street, commented what a mess the perimeter is and that it probably wasn't up to code. It was obvious to him and just about anyone, if you look at it, that for the last almost 50 years of existence of perimeter, that the blacktop, it just keeps being stacked on, on top of blacktop. The curbs have not been raised and the old surface grinded or milled, uh, properly maintained. So, therefore, what we have are curbs that are too low and then the water goes up over the curb. So, we have a bit of a problem. It erodes the lawns of the residence, which has happened to me, eventually leads to flooding even during a moderate rain. Back in January, the city works department of Erlanger, right after this happened, December 23rd, they put up a temporary curb, but it was only on my, in front of my house. This was really only a Band-Aid for a street that is in dire need of major surgery. They're just not equipped to deal with a problem this massive and, uh, you know, I think they're well aware of this problem. If you just go look at it, you'll see what I'm talking about. Fast forward to Sunday, August 28th, my house almost flooded again, water coming over the curb and down the drive, almost too much for the drain to handle. On this date, my next door neighbor, 622 perimeter, they did flood, uh, for what I'm sure is the first time ever. Pretty familiar with that house. And of course, this was due to the exact same issue. I'm sure there are many others that have and will have these same issues. You know, I think you have a major issue here that needs to be addressed immediately. We literally have, we have to put out sandbags and stay home when it rains just to make sure our house doesn't flood. Even pulling the grate out of the driveway drain in many instances. I would really like to have a licensed independent engineer come out and take a look at this. I think it needs major surgery. I can assure you that I think there'll be many more, probably like me, addressing you. I have done records, open records request that I have no doubt will prove everything I said here. Contracts were maybe awarded without oversight, at due diligence, from past administrations, not blaming you guys. Shortcuts, it seems were taken and now people are literally, like me, are paying for it. A meeting with Sherri Hoffman of Erlanger on Thursday for this open records request. She's been great. And any of you are welcome to join us. I do appreciate your service to Erlanger. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
As, as you were speaking, Mr. Fields pulled up the street repair, replacement, resurfacing schedule here. And it does look like the first phase of perimeter is set for next year. But, you know, to me, it sounds like it's probably something that's a little bit more urgent.
Yeah, I think it's pretty urgent. I mean, yeah, we had, you know, $5,000 out of pocket at Christmas just to, just to clean up the mess. And easily, the one estimate we have is $10,000 on getting the house repaired. Now, we're starting to repair the house, but we're worried about flooding again. So, it's definitely an issue and I, I hope that we can take a look at it. And your idea of closing perimeter, I think that's a great idea. At Stevenson, it's a real mess there. So, I'll go on record to say that, too.
All right.
But whoever's idea that was, thank you. Because I, I don't let my kids drive through there and I don't think most people that live there do, because that's a really dangerous intersection. It's amazing no one's been hurt or killed there. So, thank you guys for your service.
Thank you, Mr. McHugh. All right, the next up to speak this evening is Mr. Estenfelder.
I'll try to be brief. You all know why I'm here. I'd like to make the end of perimeter there where it ties on to Stevenson a cul-de-sac. With my busy lifestyle, I haven't been able to get out and get much more signatures. I have gotten some through word of mouth. People have stopped and asked me and I end up making it to their house just to show that I'm trying to get around. What was the gentleman's name that you mentioned that you gave my number to?
Joe Christfield.
Christfield?
Christfield, yeah.
All right, just so I can know when he calls, who I'm speaking to. And I haven't got to your house. I've stopped kind of about Lakemole, so I haven't got all the way up around to your house, but we'll be talking. I know where you're at. And I haven't even got to Crestline. I've, I've probably got about 25 houses and 23 of them all signed and love the idea. But, you know, and I'll go back to this, I know I'm jumping, but I will attest to the flooding. My neighbor at 618, the Humes, about three years ago, we got permission from their neighbor. We actually, where it drops down, we built a wall and put a drain in to catch the water that comes off the hillsides. And we put four-inch pipe in and it shot out like a fire hose. So, we had to double the, we had to put two drains in, one in his yard and one in their neighbor's yard, and put two four-inch pipes and it comes out of that crazy. When we get a good hard rain, it'll actually, I mean, it's this deep and it dips down probably even deeper, 18 or 20 inches, and it'll fill up like a lake in a poor person's backyard. But I know they came out and patched the curb along my side along Teakwood, because if you come to my house, it's eroded that deep along the edge where the curb used to be. They put up a blacktop curb. Just the other morning, I was getting ready to seal my driveway and the neighbor across from me, they patched a little make-do blacktop curb in front of his because he was getting flooding. They just did that the other day. So, the curbs have been dwindling due to stacking the road. So, it's a, it's a huge problem. Yeah, so if they come through next year, they're just going to stack the road. But back to my thing, I wanted to thank the police department. Who's here from the police department? Thank you, anybody. I mean, I, I go out there and I talk to the officers every time I see them out there and I tell them thank you. I think the first morning, there was two officers that sat there in the morning, pulled 10 people over and while they were out, and just between seven and eight in the morning, one hour, pulled 10 people over, while they were up the street, five or six more. If there'd have been a third officer that day, they'd had 15 or 16. It's amazing how many people they've pulled over. I would guess, you know, because I'm home, I'd say about 20, 25 people that they've pulled over and they're there an hour here, half hour there. And they're pulling over a large amount. I don't know, it sounded like somebody kind of had numbers, but they've pulled over a lot of people. And it's not getting, I mean, it is getting better. Currently, you'll see some people stop, but even this morning, leaving my house off Teakwood because I guess sealed my driveway on Hallam, so I'm on Teakwood, I got a driveway. And I pulled out and as I pulled to the stop sign, two cars were coming up to the stop sign on Hallam. And one was a little Kia Soul and he got there just a touch before me, so I let him go. Well, shoot, the other guy was going to follow him right through the intersection. So, I went. He rode my rear end all the way down the road. Finally, when I turned, he sat on his horn. And it's like, they're using our neighborhood for a cutthroat. They're skipping Turgy Foot, they're skipping Stevenson Road, and our neighborhood's not safe because we got too many people coming through our neighborhood that should not be there. Everybody I talked to, I do tell them that, hey, this is something that needs to go through the fire department. We might not, you know, based on what I was told from Field Crest over, might come from down off Narrows and da-da-da. And a lot of people are like, have them rezone it because we don't care. The traffic's got to stop. It's got to stop. So, that's where I'm at. When's the next meeting?
We've got a city council committee meeting, so it's not the, it's not the regular council meeting, it's more of a caucus meeting or a brainstorm.
Okay, when's the next regular meeting?
It would be the first Tuesday of November. That's November 1st.
Okay, because I've got a lot of people that I've talked to that want me to get back to them.
Great.
So, I'd like to bring them.
Okay.
I think we can nip that one question in the bud, maybe that one night. But that's all I have. Thank you. I really appreciate kind of getting on it. Thank you for passing my number along. And thank you to the police department, because I'll tell you what, it's made a difference, but it's a Band-Aid. Because once they realize we're not there every day, now it's once a week or now it's once a month, they're, they're going to start running it again. We, you know, we need to come up with a resolution, not a Band-Aid.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for staying on top of it. All right, was there anybody else that wanted to speak this evening? All right, then we'll move on to bids.
Yes.
You can discuss that, Mr. Dunhoff.
Okay, like I said, it's a 9:20 committee meeting. We received the bids for the demolition of the property at 710 Erlanger Road. We had six bids submitted, anywhere from 23,600 up to 59,300. And the committee's intention to accept a low bid from AFM demolition in the amount of 23,600. And I would make that in the form of a motion.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second from Mr. Burke. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Was there anything else, Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, is there any old business to discuss this evening? Any new business to discuss?
Yeah, tomorrow is Steve's birthday. If anybody's got gifts, send up Steve. We'll drop gifts off to Steve tomorrow for his birthday.
Or gift cards or, yeah, yeah.
Cash.
Yeah, cash.
He's too young to be having birthdays.
So, happy birthday tomorrow.
Happy birthday, Steve.
Steve won't be here tomorrow. He'll be in Lexington with me, so, um, so, yeah, okay. So, you know, get the gifts here early so we can take them with us or whatever. Lunch or something down there would be good.
All right, so we'll move on to legislation. First one is an ordinance prohibiting the uses and structures. First reading?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kent County, Kentucky prohibiting certain conditions and uses of real estate and structures in the city, providing criminal and civil penalties for the violation thereof. As previously discussed, the, this ordinance is merely an update of a currently existing ordinance and the purpose of it is to make it to technically conform with the legislation that was passed by the General Assembly, uh, this year.
All right, Mrs. Hoffman will note the first reading of that. The next one is an ordinance for HB 422 code enforcement, another first reading.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance of the city of Erlanger in Kent County, Kentucky, creating a code enforcement board for the civil enforcement of certain ordinances of the city. Again, this is a consequence of House Bill 422 and it is an ordinance that simply brings our current code enforcement's board in compliance with the technical requirements of that legislation.
All right, we'll note the first reading of that as well.
Bottom line, mayor, is neither of these ordinance create any substantive changes in the functions and operations of the city.
Wonderful, good. Thank you. All right, without having anything else, then I'll ask for a motion that we adjourn.
No, we can't.
Oh, that's right, executive session. Thank you. Mr. Howard?[1766.91]